I'll call a meeting back to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our meeting this evening, those present and watching on cable. First item on our agenda is to sign a deed and release for the Smith settlement. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen convey pursuant to authority granted by a vote taken under Article One of the December 6, 2004 special town meeting, the 1.8 acre parcel described on a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in North Reading showing lot line relocation at 228 and 230 Elm Street, dated June 2, 2014, prepared by Bayside Engineering, to Linda M. Smith for nominal consideration and execute a deed to accomplish the foregoing.
Second. Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion?
Just a way of discussion, Mr. Chairman, just to let the public know there's going to be two other motions authorizing us to release a cross agreement and also a release of claims relative to the suit that was filed. So there'll be three motions to settle the matter.
And this is basically the final process of closing on this issue that was voted at town meeting in October.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
I will abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. It's four and one abstention. Mr. Yule is abstaining.
Just as a matter of record, Mr. Yule was not on the board at the time that we signed the agreement.
Correct.
Correct, Mr. Yule?
That is correct. Thank you.
I assume that's your rationale?
That is my rationale.
Oh.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen execute the release of cross easement agreement as authorized under Article Nine of the October 6, 2014 town meeting vote.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? This is the second part of Part Three of this convenience. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
You can abstain again?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Yule.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen execute the release of claims relative to the Linda A. Smith et al. versus Town of North Reading et al., Superior Court, CA Number 2012-0600F.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Motion carries.
And again, there are three copies of each that have to be signed, Mr. Chairman, and I believe one of them needs to be notarized.
Three of them.
Oh, one signature on it has been notarized.
One of the documents has to be notarized. One of them, three of them. Okay. Do we want to move along or do we want to?
We're going to sign those. Well, we have a notary here.
Oh, okay.
All right. So why don't we just sign them now? Okay. There goes Town of North Reading. It's Board of Selectmen. Okay, so this one here we're going to have. This is the one that needs to be notarized. So why don't we have the chairman sign this one? All right? And then the rest, oh, wait a second. These are, no, excuse me, they all say witness. I don't know.
That town document does not need to be notarized. The two will do.
Okay. I'll sign that one.
Michael, you want to pass one of them down this way?
Yeah.
We'll start signing in the other direction too.
Mr. Chairman, I would have covered the top one would be you, Mr. Chairman.
Top left? No, no, the top, top page.
Top page.
Sorry, my apologies.
It's the second page. It's the second page, bottom of the second page, for the chairman.
You just signed it last year.
On the right hand side.
Yeah.
Yep.
On the last page. Page three.
Yeah, I get it.
Do I sign on both pages or just?
Oh, you need your.
No. The first agreement coming on the second page, there's one line on the side.
That's not black. That's not black.
Oh, this isn't black either.
This is black.
Doesn't have any.
It'll be black then.
Right. Should be black, because you know that. Sorry. That's why I'm standing here. Why, it moved. I should have abstained on the bond signing. All those bonds we had to sign the other night. Don't close it. Don't close it? There you go. Thanks. You're welcome.
Now I can't tell if the pen's black or blue anymore. Looks like it is black. Have a black too?
Yes.
I could just ask you to write your phone number to the right of your name there in that box.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is proclamation. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim November 2014 as pancreatic cancer awareness month and to read the attached proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
I'll read it and then you can sign it, all right?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question. Next item on our agenda is proclamation. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim November 2014 as pancreatic cancer awareness month and to read the attached proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Like me or are you going to read them, Mr. Yule?
I'll read it and then you can sign it, all right?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Declaring the month of November pancreatic cancer awareness month in the Town of North Reading, whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to become the second by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late stage and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. First year diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 920 deaths will occur in Massachusetts in 2014. Whereas the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas it will be very difficult to leverage the opportunities that come out of the scientific framework developed as a result of the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act unless sustained and adequate funding is provided to the National Institutes of Health and National Cancer Institute. And whereas federal funding for medical research is critical to job protection and creation in Massachusetts. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in North Reading and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in North Reading support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of North Reading are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments, therefore being resolved that the Board of Selectmen designated the month of November 2014 as pancreatic cancer awareness month in Town of North Reading. Robert James Siri, Chairman of Board of Selectmen.
Mr. O'Leary, I thank you for reading that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's a long one. It's a long one. Two copies. Three copies. Did they three copies stick?
Yes, yep, there's three copies.
Three?
That's a little sticky, this is.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda are the minutes of October 21 regular session. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 21, 2014 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 21, 2014 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? We also have minutes of October 21.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 29, 2014 regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 5, 2014 regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for September 2014 in the amount of $12,928.65 as follows. Copeland and Page, PC General, $10,528.65. Copeland and Page, PC Labor, $558. Copeland and Page, Water, $1,062. West, that's West Publishing, $780. Total, $12,928.65.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? I just have a question regarding the legal bill, legal bills. How, if you don't have an answer, maybe you could give it back to us regarding how we're doing with respect to the total amount that we budgeted.
I'd be happy to report back to the board between now and the next meeting.
Okay, great. On a motion. Do I call a motion?
Yeah, it's been said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Okay, right, we're almost on schedule here where we had like drink appointment with the school committee, secondary school building committee. We have the whole school committee here or?
Yeah, for the school.
Board members? Okay. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint North Reading School Principal Anthony J. Lopret and Town Administrator Michael P. Gilberto as members of the secondary school building committee for the duration of the project.
Second.
You'll hear a second.
Mr. Yule, seconded.
Second.
Motion and second. This will be a roll call vote?
Don't we want to thank them for volunteering? Mr. Venezia, would you like to call the roll of your members?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Venezia, yeah.
Mr. Brianna.
No, read the.
Say the names.
Say the names.
It's one motion.
It's one motion?
Yeah, I think you put both people in one motion.
Both people in one motion.
Oh, we don't have to say the name?
Not unless someone wants to split it, because you don't want to vote for Michael or someone.
If you're voting for two of them, I guess it's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Bowles, aye.
Mr. Webster. Aye.
I was kind of up in the air, but if you do it two at once, I'll go aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Yule.
Aye.
Mr. Fody.
Aye.
Mr. Frisco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Only about a year and a half to go.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Feel free to stay.
Next item on our agenda is public comment.
I was going to say, does Mr. Lopret even know he was nominated?
I'll wait.
Okay. I told him today.
I just wait.
Thought you were going to tell him tomorrow.
I got it, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, Sean, two things I'd like to comment on tonight. One, and I had stopped in last Wednesday, day after the election, I spoke to the Town Administrator, Mr. Gilberto, stopped down, speak to Mrs. Stats, she wasn't in, she was in a meeting, spoke to her staff. And the reason why I did so was I had an opportunity last Tuesday during the election to be a poll watcher as an attorney at a neighboring community. And after having sat at this polling place in a neighboring community for a period of about six hours, I came away with a greater appreciation on how Mrs. Stats sets up our polling place at St. Teresa's, how her staff is well-trained, how it's so easy, when you walk into St. Teresa's, you have the informational table, if you're unfamiliar with what precinct that you're supposed to vote at, how well it's laid out in terms of getting your ballot, voting, and depositing your ballot into a ballot box. Because in a neighboring community that my head spun after being here for six hours in terms of, I walked away saying the integrity of the voting process in the community I was in was flawed, and the integrity of the voting process here in North Reading seems superb and stellar. So I wanted to make a public comment to express my appreciation of how well our town clerk, her staff, and the election workers do so well at every election that we have, no matter whether it was one person on the ballot or several, whether it's a gubernatorial election or presidential election. I just, it was amazing, because I hadn't voted in another location in over 15, 16 years nor had I been at another polling place in that particular time. So I, as I expressed it to Gilberto, and I'm sure he passed it along, her staff passed it along to Mrs. Stats, I thought was absolutely wonderful, a job that's been done here. And I think at times we think that following is a tight ship, and probably too tight in terms of getting your ballot, voting, no communication, very little communication with anyone that's there, but I've come away with saying that's the way it should be done everywhere. So I wanted to state that.
I'm sure she would appreciate your comments, and I certainly do the same. It's good to hear those kinds of comments for our employees that are working hard to keep this community running properly.
The second reason why I came this evening was following your last board meeting that was held in this particular room that was televised. I didn't see it, but soon after the meeting that evening and then following days, I was contacted by a number of people about something Mr. Yule is going to be directed at you. You brought up an agreement that was signed by the board, you made an allegation or suggested that the document was signed with my signature on a date following my term expiring on this board. It appears to me that since you've been back on the board, you want to play a role of a "I got you" selectman. And that's your choice. You've been elected by the people. I think it's wrong. Mr. Yule, you and I sat on the board together for a period of three years. You have my home number. You have my email address. You have my cellphone number. During the time that you said that you had done your investigation relative to that agreement, and I'm not going to get into the merits, good or bad, what have you, but when you did your investigation, both prior to town meeting and subsequent to town meeting, I never got a home phone call from you, I never got an email from you, I never got a phone call from you on my cellphone. I find that reprehensible. You came here, you make an allegation, you suggest that I did something that was improper, illegal, unethical. Mr. Yule, I tell you, I pride myself on my veracity and my integrity, both in my personal life and my professional life. And now let's get to my professional life. In my professional life, I'm governed by three Board of Barer overseas. In Massachusetts, I've been licensed in Massachusetts in 1993. My racket with the Board of Barer overseas is unblemished. I've been licensed from the state of Rhode Island since 1994. My racket in the state of Rhode Island since 1994 has been unblemished. I've been licensed to practice law in the state of Florida since 1996. My racket in the state of Florida is and will remain unblemished. What you may not realize is that in my profession, these governing bodies review what I do, both in my professional life, in my personal life, as well as on any board or any committee that I may sit. I take that obligation, that responsibility, very seriously. You should know, I worked very hard to get myself through law school. My family sacrificed quite a bit in assisting me to get through law school. I would not jeopardize my license to practice either one of those states that I passed a bar exam in and that I've been practicing an attorney for 21 years now. I would have thought after Mr. O'Leary was so kind to explain to you during that meeting about how that document came to be, that at that point, Mr. Yule, from that point in time until today, you would have called me, sent me an email, you've done none of any of those things. As I stand here, disappointed in myself that I voted for you in May, I'm disappointed in myself that I encourage others to have voted for you in May. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on our, anyone else with public comment, first of all? Next, update on Tennessee gas pipeline. Mr. Yule.
Yes. Hopefully you all received my email. I sent it late last night, so when I referred to tomorrow, I guess maybe some of you may have read it today. But just wanted to give you an update. It's pretty well summed up in the email. I hope I was clear. But I'm going to kind of read it so that the public can know what we have, what we've been doing, because the Tennessee pipeline has been, issue has been around for a while. It's going to be around for quite a number of years, and there are a lot of concerns by a lot of people. Can, am I, okay, great. Okay, so North Reading has been represented at all of the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition meetings. They've been going on since June, something like that, pretty far back. We have participated in dialogue to help identify and clarify information valuable.
Can you speak up a little bit?
For people in the room.
Okay, okay. Try to better. Okay. We have participated in dialogue to help identify and clarify information valuable to North Reading. We have also met and communicated with Kinder Morgan on changes in the pipeline placement. The Town Administrator, Mr. Gilberto, has been very involved along with me. There are three questions to be answered at this point, the continued role of the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline, participation as intervenors, and the current role of the Board of Selectmen. The Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline continues to be an informational coalition. That is its primary goal. More input is necessary for it to determine which direction to proceed, as many changes continue to take place, such as shifting of the pipeline. The coalition continues to look at the big picture, incorporating 10 communities, which includes North Reading. It is attempting to identify the best of three choices. One, oppose the pipeline regardless of applicant. Two, support a specific applicant, i.e. either KM, Kinder Morgan, or Spectra, which would mean not to oppose the pipeline categorically. And three, not oppose the pipeline at all. However, almost all of the coalition would prefer that there would be no pipeline. The Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition appears to be headed towards the reality that a pipeline will happen. Almost all members, if not all, oppose the KM, Kinder Morgan, pipeline. But there seems to be consensus that Spectra may be a better alternative, because they appear to be using their established pipelines, whereas Kinder Morgan is forging a new and possibly invasive route. At this point, the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline has not taken a stand for or against the pipeline. FERC has an intervener process, in which property owners, boards of selectmen, individuals, organizations, coalitions, committees, companies, et cetera, can participate in the process for or against the pipeline. It will be in the best interest, is my estimation, that it would be in the best interest of the North Reading, of North Reading for the Board of Selectmen to become an intervener. As an intervener, the Board of Selectmen can represent the sovereignty of North Reading and support its property owners. Being an intervener is about having a say. And please keep in mind that intervener process, as I said, can be individuals within the town, or it can be committees, or like, such as the coalition, and such as Board of Selectmen. It can be made up of many different individual groups. It is not advantageous, this board, to take a stand for or against the gas pipeline at this time. The final route of the pipeline is not complete, making any determination temporary. FERC will not accept intervener submittals until the application for convenience and necessity has been filed. In other words, we can take a stand now, we can do, make comments and so on, FERC will not hear us. So at this point, it's really vital for us and crucial for us to continue to gather information and really identify what the pipeline applicant is really going to do. And when that happens, then we are in a better position to represent the town and property owners are able to represent themselves, and we can work together as we see fit. The federal agency, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which is known as FERC, is responsible for authorizing and granting an applicant's right to build an interstate gas pipeline. The applicant must at least prove there is a need for its service. This can be done by showing they have 10-year purchase contracts. There are three phases to the approval process. There's the voluntary prefiling, and this is by the applicant, the pipeline company. Okay? The voluntary prefiling, file an application for certificate of convenience and necessity and post authorization. Kinder Morgan is in phase one, which does not allow for intervening, intervenes to be in the process at this stage. As far as Spectra is concerned, I'm not sure where their status, whether they've made a prefiling or not. Maybe Mr. Gilberto might be able to shed something on that.
I'm not sure where they're at in the permitting process with.
Right, so that's pretty much where we stand right now. I think what we need to do as a board is to continue with our relationship with the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline in gathering all the information. You have a good number of dedicated people trying to gather the necessary information to make sure that what we are going to argue for or against, we will have the accurate information. And I hope that answers any questions anybody has.
Is there anyone in the? Is there anyone in the, first of all, in any of the board, have any comments or questions?
I just, I wasn't familiar, or still not really very familiar with the Spectra.
Yes.
As you say, they already have existing pipelines that they would be replacing?
No, they can, whether they would replace them or not, that part I wouldn't know, but they can at least run along the routes that they already have.
Right, so, and I guess, maybe I missed it. I didn't sound familiar until I read this, you know, as far as Spectra.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I didn't...
Evidently, there's a competing...
I know, apparently it's of competing interest.
And they have, Spectra provides, I think, the region now, across Massachusetts, is that where it comes from, rather than coming up from...
I'm not 100% sure. You know, in the, in the coalition meetings, it was brought up, and there's some, some form of expertise on them, but I guess, you know, obviously, the biggest concern right now has, and the biggest topic has been Kinder Morgan, and they've come in lately. Spectra has come in lately into the picture.
Yeah, to me, it's going to be difficult to, to present a case that there isn't a need for additional natural gas in the area. My guess is that Kinder Morgan will be able to satisfactorily produce some sort of contractual agreements at the appropriate time in order to justify the need. And I think that's probably what everybody, the consensus of it is, is that it's going to be difficult to stop. But if there is an alternative, competitive for the service or the delivery of a product that would be less intrusive on all the communities, I'd like to see them step forward more quickly. You know, so that we could, again, rather than be totally negative on something that probably is inevitable and coming, we could be supportive of someone, some other effort with less environmental impact and impact on communities and neighborhoods across Commonwealth. So, if you could get us some more information, that would be, that would be great. And I know that there's been some residents that have been emailing us and looking for us to take a position, and, you know, my initial reaction is, you know, I'm certainly not, wasn't in favor of the proposal as put forth by Kinder Morgan, and I don't think that they've, they seem to be taking the most cost-effective route, which is to cut through these communities, rather than going through the, maybe a little more expensive, and from a permitting standpoint, difficult route, as far as, you know, following major highways, rather than cutting through neighborhoods, you know, those types of approaches. And I read some of the correspondence, as far as why they can't go this way and they can't go that way, but again, I think most of what's driving it is to see all mighty buck, and there's a lot of money to be made here, but the impact that they could have on communities is everlasting. So, you know, to me, if there's an alternative route that's a little more costly, you know, they should, that's what they should be doing, that's what elected representatives, I believe Senator Warren has already expressed that view, that they should be looking to be less intrusive. But if they're not going to be doing that, and there's a viable competitor that we can support their efforts, I say, let's buy into that program and find out a little bit more about it.
The purpose tonight, putting it on the agenda, one is that we made a commitment to the community to keep them informed of what's going on, and clearly, it's a long process, and as things evolve, I've asked Jeff to bring it to the attention of the board.
Yeah, but based upon the time schedule that we have here, too, it's a long process, but it goes by quickly. I mean, Kinder Morgan's anticipating on their timeline to have approvals, you know, by a year from now, and start construction in 2017. So it's, it's coming fast, approaching on top of us, and again, they have the resources, and we just have to be in a reactionary mode and try and monitor their activities, and I applaud Jeff's efforts, and, first of all, stepping forward and willing to be part of this, representatives of the coalition, but the coalition's efforts, too, as far as monitoring the activities and keeping the people public and informed. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I must say, the TA, Mr. Gilberto, has been extremely helpful and supportive and very involved in the process and on top of everything. It's always good to know that if you think you missed something, you've got somebody to turn to, to help you out. It's always very helpful, but I'm in the process, I'm trying to find a sheet, a...
What's the timeline?
No, I'm looking for the presentation that the, I think I just found it.
Jeff, while you're doing that, I'm just going to ask, there's a few people in the audience that may have dropped in this evening. Anyone have any questions regarding the gas pipeline?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could I just offer an update to the community with regard to the open house, which was postponed?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I know that there's been quite a bit of question about that. So, the town was notified of a series of dates that Kinder Morgan was coordinating with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to hold a series of open houses throughout Massachusetts. And the way it works is they schedule the dates with FERC, that's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and then they identify the locations afterwards. So a date was identified for a meeting that'd take place here in North Reading, it was supposed to be last night at the high school. We were advised the middle of last week, and we put a notice up on the website and on the government channel as well, that that open house was to be postponed. And the rationale that has been provided for the postponement of the open house is that because of the short amount of time between Kinder Morgan's filing of alternative route maps, which they did not do until last week, and the open houses, there was a sentiment that that did not provide enough time for those alternate routes to be reviewed prior to the open houses from occurring. And so they contacted the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and it was agreed, apparently, that the open houses would be rescheduled. We have not been provided a timeline for when they will be rescheduled for. We have not been provided a timeline for even when they will identify the dates. But when we do know it, and when we do identify, we will continue to advocate for an open house to be held here in North Reading, as was originally requested, and as was originally scheduled, and we will continue to keep the community apprised of such an open house.
Yes, yes, please. Name and address for our secretary.
I'm Beth Thompson from 77 Marblehead Street, and thank you for that explanation. I'm concerned because of the format for meeting with community members, the format that Kinder Morgan is offering, where the community members come into a big room where there are several stations, where individuals can present their questions and get their answers, where they're, but that doesn't allow the community to come together and listen to whatever update Kinder Morgan wants to offer us at that time. And I feel, I'm not on the pipeline, I'm just a community member. I just feel that I'm being excluded by that format. I don't have a particular question about my property or anything like that. My questions are more general, and if it's possible to register that concern with the people who are setting up the next meeting, I would appreciate it, because I would prefer a presentation on their part, and a community being able to question the members who are presenting the information to the community. Does that make sense?
I understand your request.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question, on it, regarding the gas pipeline?
My name is Patty Woodbury, I live at 77 Damon Street. My husband and I own most of the land that the pipeline is proposed to go through. And I agree with Mr. O'Leary on his point that they can take other routes, but they're trying to find the cheapest route, and just one deal that they made within the last year was worth 71 billion. So I don't see why neighborhoods and communities and places that mean a lot to people, we've lived at this site for 40 years, we have put up with National Grid and their easement and the lines, and that, in my opinion, should be enough. You know, why? Just because this multi-billion dollar company wants to take the cheapest route possible, do we have to put up with another public utility on our land? I know those power lines were put in, I believe, in the 30s, and we bought the land knowing they were there, and we have abided by National Grid's rules, easements, and all, but the fact that somebody else who has a billion-dollar company can just say, "Well, by eminent domain, we're going to run right through your property," has me and an awful lot of other people very upset. And I just wanted to make that point known, and I don't know if I'm doing it right, but...
Well, you really need to take that point to the meeting.
Yes, and I want to do that, and I do understand your point tonight, that you're not ready to make a decision, because you still have to go to the rest of the meetings and find out more, but I sincerely hope with all my heart, you keep in mind that we are the people of North Reading, and this is a multi-billion dollar company that's just trying to save money by going through wetlands. We have Native American artifacts on the land that were found by the National Grid people in ties with the Wampanoag community, I've spoken to them. We have a movement starting here in town to do all we can to fight this all we can. Thank you for listening.
So just to explain the board's position, is, one is, we represent the entire community, and we have an obligation to get all the facts and make a decision, and we've assigned one of our board members to be, track this, it's that important. Normally, each member of the board shares specific projects, and in this case, it's elevated to that level.
And who is that person?
And our town administrator has been co-chairing, co-visiting these specific meetings, so we're keeping it, you know, on our radar screen, and the fact that it's on our agenda this evening is that, over time, as these meetings evolve, there will be updates to the board, so we're informed, and at the same time, the public's getting informed.
I was curious, as a board, whether you've supported it or opposed it, would it make any difference?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Well, you know, I think, in the, in the process of FERC, if they're convinced that there is an absolute need, then it's going to happen. So all that we can do at that point is to try to influence where the path is going to be, right? And, you know, you made the point of, from a corporation point of view, they're probably trying to lay out a path that's the least costly.
Exactly.
And we're looking for, if it has to be, we're going to fight for a path that's least intrusive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we've also, in our research and gathering of neighbors and community members, found, been told that this is just to connect it to Boston to get the gas overseas. So I know you said you have more investigation to do, and more learning to do in this coalition.
That is a similar bit of the information that, the concern that is being discussed. We, you know, we try to just identify, get the facts together, and try to follow what they're doing. We, we can surmise what we think they're doing and why they're doing it, but please keep in mind that this is a federal project that is overseen, obviously, by FERC. I wanted to share with you, I'm sorry, I think you wanted to say something.
That's quite all right, you started, go ahead.
To answer your question, any questions you might have with FERC, you know, to be the intervener, because you can be an intervener.
I have only contacted FERC, but I don't know.
But you're way, you're way ahead of, you're way ahead of the process, because they're on a pre-filing basis, and intervenors don't take place until the applicant makes a filing.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so, you'd want to stay on top of that. Now, did you go to the www.ferc.gov?
Yes.
Help?
Yes.
Okay, so you're familiar with that. What I wanted to do was share with you that, you know, what does FERC do when they have the application? All right? And it, it is driven by purchase contracts of 10 years or more. Okay? FERC analyzes the information, and the application considers the following: the project impact in pipeline competition, so that would be that Spectra, KM issue, the possibility of overdeveloping pipeline capacity, the subsidization by existing customers, potential environmental impacts, avoiding the unnecessary use of eminent domain, and, and safety. FERC generally defers safety to the US DOT. FERC's approval is highly contingent upon demonstrating market need, as evidenced by long-term 10-plus years of contracts. FERC may approve the project with or without modifications, or reject it.
Would selling gas, excuse me, would selling gas overseas be considered part of that?
Well, if they have contracts...
...the definition of a worthy permit?
It doesn't specify who they have the contracts with.
So there's no, it doesn't matter, whether they sell it overseas or...
I don't know that answer, but...
This is all speculation.
We asked them at our first public hearing, we asked them, do you have any contracts?
It's all speculation.
Yeah, but, but, but they would have to have contracts to show that there is a need. Again, where those, with whom those contracts are with, you know, that's, that's internal for them, but they'd have to show it to FERC, to prove that they have the contracts.
How is the photo going?
I'm done, thank you.
I think it's safe to assume that, based on the way they've handled things from day one, Kinder Morgan hasn't endeared themselves to anybody in this town as a year.
No.
You know, there's a proper way of doing things, and the first thing is, you don't go start knocking on people's doors when you're talking about a project of this magnitude, not at least contacting town officials. In my full-time job, I deal with utilities every single day. We have a similar project to this, like this, going through this city of Chelsea, with, it's electrical, and N-Star notified us on day one, has had several meetings with us, and is going to, and is going to do, they're required to do the same type of meeting that Kinder Morgan was going to do last night, but they're willing to work with us, and they're willing to, to, they've given us, they're required to give us two options, they've given us four options, and are asking us to support one of the four that's going to be less detrimental on the town. So, you know, I'm not going to speak on behalf of anybody else, but I can, I think we can all assume, or we can all agree that they haven't endeared themselves to us. Even the public hearing they had here several months ago, they weren't very cooperative. They were, you know, in my opinion, and everybody else can speak on themselves, but they were a little accusatory against us, as opposed the other way around. I believe you were at the meeting. You know, so, you know, at this point, like I said, you're the chairman, and Mr. Yule said, we're going to sit back at this point, because they're a little too premature in the, in the process for us to say what, what stands we want to take, but I can assure you that, on my, for myself, anyway, you know, I'm not a huge fan of Kinder Morgan at this point, so, and the way they've handled everything.
Are you people aware of their record, and all the history of Kinder Morgan, with some of the problems they've had?
Yeah.
I was going to mention three, if that's okay. I mean, there's the whole list, but one is from Suson Marsh, which is in northeast California. They had a rupture there, and they spilled 1,500 barrels of diesel fuel into marshland.
But they said they were sorry.
And they're going to come through, possibly the Inlet River. In Jackson, Mississippi, they had a blow, the line blow up, one dead, three critically injured. And in Walnut Creek, California, they've got six felony charges against them, and they were convicted on all counts. Five people were dead. They got a $15 million fine, and they pleaded no contest.
But they were sorry.
So, I mean, I know it sounds exaggerated, but, I mean, if they come through, I feel like I'm living next to a bomb, and...
And so do everybody else.
If it goes, it goes, and you'll never know what hit you. And, you know, what do we get out of it? We don't have gas.
And there are other routes available, and they have billions of dollars to work with. That's what has all of us so up there, we've said, and there's a lot of us in this town.
And we know it's not up to you guys, it's like, you know... Big business and government.
I've never done this before in my life, and I'm a nervous wreck. You've answered a lot of my questions, and...
People don't speak up. Things will happen, so...
Right. And I thank you.
I'd like to move on with our agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Just for an important information.
Please.
What is the role of...what are the roles of Brad Jones and Senator Tar? How do they come in on the discussion?
They are aware of this.
Yes, I saw them at the first meeting.
But, you know, again, until...
Is it so amorphous that you just...
Until there's an approval, it's hard to, you know, there's nothing to fight at the moment. You know, short of, we know something is brewing.
Yeah.
Right? And, you know, there's a well-defined process, and if it's determined that there is a need for energy in this area, then they'll get their approval. And then it'll be up to the communities and the individual citizens that are impacted to try to sway whatever has to happen in a way that's the least intrusive. And we'll be working to make it the least intrusive, as I said earlier, in North Reading. That's all that we can do, if in fact the federal government gives these people approval to put a pipeline.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, through this coalition of communities, whether it's coming through, that gives us a little bit louder voice.
A leverage voice.
A little louder voice as far as seeking alternative routes and suggesting alternative routes, and having them...and have the appropriate authorities take a look at those things as far as mitigating the impact on these communities.
I think it's very important for us out here, outside of the loop, as this couple has demonstrated, to get more information. We just sound very...we are bewildered. Even when we go online and try to inform ourselves, the information, like I have a 30-page printout from Kinder Morgan, which is not informational. It's just publicity.
Propaganda. It's propaganda. I mean, that's the thing.
Exactly.
Why we're talking tonight is to provide as much information as we have.
Okay.
And, you know, this may be on our agenda two weeks from now.
Just to let the public know that it hasn't fallen off the radar screen. We are monitoring it. We are participating in this regional effort to mitigate the impact of it and suggest other alternatives, and we'll continue to do so. And then at the appropriate time, we'll weigh in, depending upon what's actually filed, because the filing hasn't taken place yet. And then we have something to respond to. And that's when you call on your legislators and you're calling your congressional delegation to get involved.
Thank you.
And again, the congressional delegation is across the state here, so it's impacting a lot of communities.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on. I don't think we have any more information of any value.
I just want to wrap something up here for their benefit. It'll just take a few seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to give you an idea of the schedule, if you're not familiar with it. Obviously, they had a...they did a pre-filing in September. In November and December, they're supposed to do the open house, okay? As we know, it was postponed, so they should have something by December, within the month of December, I would hope.
It'll probably be scheduled for right around Christmas, but...
Probably, probably. And then...
Did you notice that they postponed it on Thursday when the transcript came out? And then nobody...
Also, if I...well, we tried to get it into the transcript. We tried to...we tried to use whatever...we put it on our website. I believe it was on our website, correct? So, in the town. But also, in January and February 2015, FERC will have scoping meetings. And then September 2015, they will...Kinder Morgan will submit their FERC application for certificate. So it's September 2015. Just let me finish the schedule for you. And November 2015, anticipated FERC approval. So you're talking maybe 30 to 60 days on the way, way, way outside. And then January 2017, construction would begin if they were approved. Now, keep in mind that you have the possibility of Spectra, and you have KM. There could be others. I don't know who they are, but there could be others. So they can approve none or all, anywhere within that range. So, you know...
Do you know what a FERC scoping is?
No, by definition, I don't. I have to admit that. I...my...they're going to review the...
The need, probably.
They're going to review the need.
I don't think we have any additional information offered this time. But, you know, stay tuned. Our agenda's getting posted. The transcript now has a website, which may allow them to put information up that might get missed for the coming Thursday. Is that correct, Bob?
And we have news and announcements on our website that you can sign up for. We'll send you email notices when there's...in this particular case, there was an email blast, well, to everybody that's registered to receive it. I would suggest you go online and register your email address on our website to receive those news and announcements.
Jeff, could you put those dates on your website, the ones that you just visited for us? Do you want...
We could do that?
Yeah, we could do that.
Done.
We'd be happy to do so.
Oh, good, thank you. Just gave me my...
Next item on our agenda is to get an update on the J.T. Berry property. Mr. Prisco.
Yes, things are moving along quite well, I think. Since town meeting, I'll start from there. We were able to get in place a contract with Weston and Sampson to conduct a Phase One environmental. A couple...it took us a couple of weeks, though, to get that wrapped up, because as we were going through the process with the state, we did learn that we...there was an insurance requirement that we're unaware of. But thankfully, the state was gracious enough to, and I think I brought this up at the last meeting, to extend us another three weeks. So we have a 30-december deadline to complete our environmental. So that brings us to where we are today. Weston and Sampson has completed the Phase One. I did send you guys an email last night, but I did have a little email problem, so I did end up sending it to you again this afternoon. So hopefully, you're going to report. The report is very detailed. The Phase One report isn't complete, but they wrote it in a letter just for now, because I asked that they try to send us something to keep us up to date. So you should have that in your email, but I'll just give you a quick summary of where they're at in their Phase One. So they discovered about five things that they felt confident that they should propose a Phase Two for us. And the things that they found on the site, what they were calling coal slag and clinkers, you know, I guess there was an old power plant there, so there was some debris left over from when they tore down that building. Now, there was already a Phase Two done in this area, but again, they went through and did their research, and there is some debris left over that they just want to make sure that they have...they do some testing in Phase Two to make sure that whatever in the ground there won't pollute the groundwater. And I'll get into that when I discuss the Phase Two recommendation. They also found on the property a 55-gallon drum that somebody must have tossed over the side many, many years ago that has some oil stain beneath it, but they didn't see...it doesn't seem like anything's leaking out of it. But again, they want to just go to the next level, lift up the bucket, test the soils in that area, just to make sure. On the site, the way all the buildings that were there under the J.T. Berry were heated by steam, and all those steam pipes were encased in concrete tunnels, and they had this piping. They're not sure if the piping is asbestos or not, but a lot of that concrete is still left. Tremendous amount of it is already going to remove, but there's also a good size left, some in the ground, but mostly still sitting up above the ground. I did do a walk with Mr. Gilberto. We did recognize the concrete pads sitting up with this black piping sticking out of it. They want to break off some of those pieces and test it to make sure they're not asbestos. Worst-case scenario, they extract all that when whoever develops the property, and they can actually bury that under the parking lot and encapsulate it, and that'll be safe. But again, they want to go through the next phase and just test the piping to make sure one way or another. There was a lot of residual construction material debris left over from when they did tear down all the buildings. They just want to check in those areas for any PCBs or anything like that, so they're going to recommend doing some test pourings. And they also want to go where they have locations where their old tanks were located. They want to do some test pourings in those areas as well. So that's what they have in the Phase Two recommendation for us, which I sent to you all by email. That's roughly going to be about $33,000. They feel pretty confident that they can get all this done before December 30th. We already started the process with D-CAM to start another...get the second phase of license. We have to have another license completed with them signed to allow us to do Phase Two. So we've already started the process. I feel pretty confident we're going to get that done relatively quickly.
So we've had to go back to D-CAM to get permission to do Phase Two?
We get a license to do Phase One.
Yeah.
We've now completed that. Now, they're recommending we do Phase Two, and based on what I just explained to you, what they wanted to do. But to do Phase Two, we have to get another license by D-CAM to go back onto the property.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a step process, D-CAM. This is how they like to do it. So...but we've already started the process. Danielle McKnight's been fantastic by staying ahead of it, working the administrative part of it, getting the license laid out. But I'm pretty encouraged by what they found. I have had...I have had a couple of teleconferences with Danielle in Weston and Sampson. The types of sites they've seen like this before, there's no surprise to them. Actually, they felt that, you know, there's a lot less than they expected. So they seem pretty encouraged by it. In that letter I sent you all today, there is a color...
I just looked for the letter, and I don't see an email from anyone else. So would you send any...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You did send an email today. I didn't receive it.
You did?
Yeah. I thought I did, too.
It's hung up on my mailbox, and I don't know why, but it says somewhere...
Yeah, I got a light to send it on. You did apologize saying it again.
It burnt out my phone, so it definitely had an issue. But nonetheless, it's in there. You can give me a call tomorrow once you go through it. But I just want to let you know we're moving forward. I feel like around...with the schedule, where we are in the middle of November, I feel pretty good about...I'm pretty confident that we're going to get this done in time.
And the appropriation is enough?
It is. Yeah, we allocated 50 grand. With the $33,000 plus the five that we've already spent on Phase One, I think we have plenty of money there. We've also...maybe, Michael, you can give me a little assistance with this one. We've also started to work and prepare for the legislation process. And so we've already been working on some of the documentation, obtaining some that they've used with other towns, if you want to give a little update on that.
Yeah, essentially, that is the update, that we have...we've identified the drafts that have worked as a model in the other communities, where the sale partnership model has been successful, and that's what we're working from to provide it to our legislative delegation in time for regular filing for the 2015-2016 session. And I expect that we'll meet that deadline.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's pretty positive, I feel.
Yeah.
But any questions? I do apologize again for the late information getting out to you. I did try my best to get it yesterday when I received it, but technology as it may. But again, I'm free anytime. Tomorrow, over the weekend, feel free, just give me a call. We can go over anything that gets sent to you in this report.
Just checking. I don't seem to have it.
I will send it. As we go into the next subject, without being too rude, I will make sure I send it off.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the Berry property at this point, anyway? Discuss the inter municipal water agreement. Mr. Gilberto, you want to give the board a quick update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update. Continue to have dialogue with the town manager in the town of Andover regarding the terms that may be workable for both communities. I have another meeting scheduled to take place tomorrow in the early afternoon after our Ed Sat meeting, and hope to either have some progress or additional information reported back to the board for recommended next steps. And I will provide that to the board in a timely manner. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Prisco, you were going to do a quick review of the strategic plan.
Yeah. Um... Just forgot. There was one thing on the strategic plan that I think we may have forgotten, because we didn't discuss it, but in light of our agenda here tonight, maybe looking into access to the Smith property, the formerly Smith property, I forget what LUC refers to it now, but I think that should be...
What's the name of it?
River...
You're right, there is a name.
I can't think of it. There is... But anyway, to me, I think that should probably be included on our strategic plan in relation to...
I can add that.
Seeking alternative access.
Before we post that on the website, I can definitely add that. I'll get the name of it from LUC.
Makes sense? I don't know if it would concur.
It makes sense to me.
Anybody concur?
Yes.
What I'd like to propose, Chairman, is that we just review the objectives in the progress assessment slides, and that's...if that's adequate enough.
You said you were going to get...
And so the public can just see. Okay, so for the folks in the audience and at home, we annually meet to update our strategic plan, and we try to set our objectives for the upcoming year and going forward. As you can see here that's up on the screen, this one hasn't really changed much from last year. The wastewater plan implementation, it's a long-term outlook. We are still staying focused on it. We have Wright Pierce as our contractor that's working our DIR. Mr. Misery and Mr. Fode are our two board members that are the liaisons on that committee and working on that implementation, so that is a long-term plan. One of the things we want to try to accomplish in 2016 and '17 is to really nail down a good financial plan, so we can see how realistic it is to implement a wastewater solution in the future. The next one is the commitment to new water resource. And as you've known and have been reading in the paper, and we continue to discuss, one of the biggest infrastructure challenges facing the town today is our water. We're not sure what option we're going with, but we are exploring a lot. We're exploring the MWRA. We're still in discussions with Andover, so whether we want to retain Andover or do both is still something that we have to decide on. But it is something that we felt confident as a board, we've committed to get that done in 2015. We have to. We really don't have much of a choice. We owe it to Andover to make a decision. We owe it to the town to make sure we have a good solution going forward. So you're going to see a resolution in the upcoming year on that. Stormwater continues to be what I either consider the wild card, because the state and the federal government hasn't come down with the mandates yet, but we know they're coming. But we have made a commitment financially, and Mr. Connavalli and his group have done an excellent job trying to stay ahead of the curve on this one, to prepare and make sure the town is in good shape. So when these mandates come down, and that's going to be an ongoing thing that we have to focus on. Technology, we continue. If you're listening in on our budget discussions, for the last couple of years, we as a board have made a concerted effort to make an investment every year in our technology. I think we're probably investing at least, if I'm not mistaken, about $50,000 a year. Does that sound right in our budgets?
Minimum of 30 on replenishment of equipment and then additional expenses for new technology.
And we've done that with our munis, and we've done that with a few other things. But we felt next year, we should really look at a technology solution to help us improve the efficiencies in our permitting process. So it's very labor-intensive. There's a lot of paper going from one hand to another, so we're going to look into making an investment in that area and in our record retention and access. It's something we had discussed with the prior town administrator. I think he had some really good ideas, but we need to explore all options that are affordable in the best interest of the town, something we are going to take on next calendar year. A revenue plan that supports services without overrides. Well, stepping out on the J.T. Berry is one of those...one of those things that we're trying to do. We're trying to find new sources of revenue that we can help pay the continuing increase in our taxes and our expenses every year. Developing a plan to address the long-term unfunded liability. I'm not going to get into the detail of that, but we did spend a considerable amount of time, and I'm sure, Bob, if you want to get into the detail of that, but I felt that at the strategic planning meeting, Mr. Misery and town administrator, Mr. Gilberto, came up with a really good solution for us to consider, and I believe we're going to go forward and implement that. I think we'll probably have a prior, future board or second meeting we're going to address that. Is that correct?
We're working with the town finance director and assessor, along with the town administrator, and we'll come back with a proposal based along the lines of what we discussed during our meeting, with, you know, the detail of this is what we're going to recommend doing.
But I think it's, you know, we've been talking about it a long time in this town. You know, what are we going to do to address this unfunded liability? And I think we're going to make some really good steps in 2015 to move towards a solution for that. Maintaining management and labor relationships.[1795.94] Maintaining management and labor relationships, it's a commitment we're going to continue to focus on. Refining collective bargaining strategies, all our contracts, what we did is prior to the new town administrator arriving, we just put small extensions on those. So that's in front of us for next year. We are going to collectively meet as a board and try to come up with a strategy like we did four years ago. And the employees stepped up, and we met in the middle, and I feel that that same opportunity is ahead of us, we work together. Because the town employees understand the challenges that face us every day, they understand the increase in the costs. So that's something we're going to definitely have to take on in 2015. We've had this goal appear for a few years now too, the shared municipal and municipal and school services. It is something that we are looking into. Mr. Gilberto has ongoing discussions with the school side. We're looking at developing, looking at where maybe we can share in the HR. We even discussed purchasing agent that could maybe be shared between the two, between the schools and the town. Facilities, maintenance and technology, another area where we think there's some synergies where we can maybe share the resources, improve the service and save money. Another discussion that we had in past years, but we really never documented until this year, we have the new wastewater treatment facility that's been structured, been constructed for the new high school and middle, new middle school. We feel there's excess capacity there that we may be able to tie in PBD Court and some other town-owned buildings into that. One, it's beneficial for us because we don't have to update and maintain those legion fields and septic systems. And that system is going to be underutilized, especially in the summer months. So by tying municipal buildings in, it's a win-win for everybody. So is that definitely something we have to start working on this calendar year, and maybe even having some discussions during our budget sessions. Identifying opportunities to team with surrounding towns and shared resources, something we've talked about, but really haven't stepped out on. But we have looked at, or we are planning on looking at animal control. We've discussed public safety dispatch several times, really haven't made any headway, but we felt that it was important to continue to keep that as a, an area, an objective that we want to try to accomplish in the next year or two. Greater energy conservation, always a challenge. We really haven't stepped out a lot on this, but it's definitely something that we're going to continue to work with. Our RMLDs come to the table with starting a pilot program, looking at transitioning from the current lighting system to an LED system. And what do we have now, Joe, what are they called?
I believe it's hypersodium.
So that contract is in place, and is something we're going to see this coming calendar year. And the ESCO, help me out with that one?
Energy Services Contractor, so essentially looking at widespread energy efficiency improvements to town buildings.
Thank you. Establishing Economic Development Plan, which is something we did start prior to Mr. Delaney, during Mr. Delaney's tenure. And it's something we're going to continue to move on, move forward with. We actually met last week, Danielle, myself, and another member from the CPC. And we're going to continue to actually really establish this economic development plan. Review of the facilities, review of facility study, the town buildings. We've heard us have been talking in the last year about this building and other town buildings. We, we really are looking at making some serious investments in this building, because we know we're not going to be leaving this building anytime soon, but we owe it to our staff. And we need to step up the professional look and the health of this building, and that's what we're going to continue to do. And those discussions will probably come up in our 2000, FY 2016 budget discussions.
It's not just this building though, it's.
No, it's not just this building. It's, the fire department's been something on our radar for a long time. There's several other buildings around town. We had a affordable housing, we need a plan. And we've kind of kicked the tires in this discussion, but we need a plan. And in 2015, the calendar year 2015, we really do need to come up with something. And that kind of ties into our senior housing and assisted living. We had a great, great lengthy discussion about this at our strategic planning. We haven't really made an honest investment in our seniors and our ability to provide them an option to continue to live in this town. A lot of seniors in that position where they've just, their increasing costs have exceeded their incomes, making it difficult for them to live. We are going to make conservative effort to try to find solutions. We discussed identifying town-owned parcels around town that we could maybe potentially turn over to an assisted living developer. We've explored that, just in discussion, nothing we've put a lot of time and energy into. But the point is, I really want to emphasize, make sure the public knows that, you know, we've talked about it, but we've never done anything, at least as long as I've been on the board, I should say. And as a board collectively, we felt pretty confident, 2015 is the year that we come up with a solution that we can move forward with. So you'll be hearing more about that as we go into the year. Transportation enhancements, always a challenge. We're not going to lose sight of that, but it's that that's a difficult one to crack. Leverage the use of available town-owned land. It's something that I think this board actually started before I came on board, but we have been, that's been an ongoing process. We have actually tried to sell some parcels of land and didn't have a lot of takers. I think since I've been on the board, we maybe sold three parcels, Steve? But we're trying to leverage it, try to sell some that we don't need, and then leverage the use of available town-owned land, maybe even in the solution of trying to find something for senior housing. If you haven't been up to PBD Court, take a look up there, that is not the answer. We need to find a better solution. And so those kind of, those three bullets actually at the end, four bullets at the end, need a tremendous amount of our attention, and I believe we're going to give, be able to give it to them. So that's it for the objectives. I don't know if any other board members wants to chime in, I'm sure I missed some highlights on it, if you want to add an input at this point, or we can go on to the next slide. Good?
I think you covered it all, Mike.
Progress assessment, I'll just quickly go through this. Obviously, the new high school is in place, something I feel pretty proud of being part of the board that was part of working through the town to get that done. And the new middle school is well underway, and it seems to be on schedule. So we, you know, we've put that in our progress assessment. Renovated the senior center, we've done a lot of improvements there, and probably a lot more still needed, but we have made a significant investment in that facility. Let's see, let me point out a few other things. The technology we've already talked about, revenue generation, the ALS program. I got to say, as a board member, I'm really proud of this. I'm really proud that we stepped out and made the effort to work with our fire chief to implement ALS. And when I read the transcript and you hear another story about how ALS has saved another life, that's something all the board members should be proud of, and that the town should be proud of, that we have this service. And I really want to send a big kudo out to Mr. Delaney, because he and Mr. Misery both, they've really invested a tremendous amount of effort to get that implemented, along with our fire chiefs, so I give them a lot of credit. Wastewater achievements, we have completed the study, there are some options out there. We know, there's no doubt, our study proves that if we brought wastewater into this town, it would generate some key increases in taxes in our commercial area. We know that. Now we just got to go out and implement the solution. Collective bargaining, I touched upon that earlier. Employee recognition, we try to find small ways to recognize our staff. We've done that through an annual luncheon, and we will continue to do that, and something that hasn't been done before, but you know, it's, there's not a lot we can do, but we do believe in the little things that try to show our appreciation. Facility study on the buildings, we talked a little bit about that already. Delinquent taxes and collections, I do want to bring that up. We've definitely seen a massive improvement in that area, and that really is a testament to Liz Provaro and her staff. And let's see, and I think that's about it on the assessment, progress assessment that I want to touch upon. Okay?
Mr. Michael?
Thank you.
Any thing that got missed and related to our meeting?
Just the one thing that Mr. O'Leary brought up, I will go ahead and change in the overall document.
Okay.
I'll send that out.
Anything else?
Then we'll put it on the website, and then if you want to set up a time to present to the staff, department heads, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Town Administrator Report.
Excuse me, you want to, we have a motion, I don't know if you want to execute it or not.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
You do want to execute it.
Yeah, would that change?
As amended.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the updated strategic plan for 2015 and beyond.
Second.
As amended.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, do you have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Second, Mr. Yule. I don't think we need further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Animus? Mr. Gilberto, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a few items of note for the community. Again, as I spoke earlier to the open house that was scheduled for last night at the high school to be hosted by Kinder Morgan on the gas pipeline, we'll continue to update the community with regard to rescheduling that open house, and we will advocate that another open house be scheduled to occur in North Reading at the time that it's appropriate. For the information of the community, the police department's going to host an informational meeting regarding the Massachusetts sex offender registry regulations here at the town hall on Thursday, November 20th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. That's one week from tonight here in the town hall, November 20th, at 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. For the board's information, as a follow-up to the presentation that I made to the board and the discussion that the board had with regard to the FY 2016 budget process, I have included a copy of a PowerPoint presentation that I made to department heads last week regarding the FY 2016 budget process, as well as expectations for budget submission. I'd like to thank the department heads for the engaged discussion that they had with regard to it and the willingness to participate. It is greatly appreciated on my part. There'll be quite a bit of thorough review on my part with the finance director, who has been very much, a significant amount of assistance on this, and there'll be more to come on the budget process as we get into January, as I outlined in the last meeting. I included a copy of a letter that I received recently from Reading Municipal Light Department with regard to work that they're looking to do in the long-term here in town with regard to preventative maintenance and tree trimming. I believe that we're going to schedule RMLD to come before the board of selectmen at the December 8th meeting to make a presentation on that and a few other items related to their long-term planning, both for the board's information and for the information of the town as well. For the board's information and for the community's information, more of a reminder that the annual turkey trot is going to occur on Thanksgiving morning, November 27th. Portions of Central Street, Park Street, Bow Street, Havel Street, and Chestnut Street will be impacted during that. I concluded a copy of the planning documents for the board's information.
You know, it's customary for the new town administrators to run, to lead the group.
Lead the group.
Coming first.
Just stand in front.
I won't be leading.
Coming first.
Just stand in front.
I won't be on front of the long side. I'd also note that in addition to the vacancies that are on the board-appointed boards and commissions, there are a number of vacancies that may be available for boards and commissions that are appointed by the town administrator. Those vacancies will be advertised on the town website, circulated through the newspaper and NORCAM in the next few weeks. Any interested parties willing to participate are encouraged to contact the office at 978-664-6010. At the moment, that concludes my update for the Town Administrator's Report. Again, just a friendly reminder for the board members that we do have the Economic Development Self-Assessment Event tomorrow morning at 8:30. That's over at the Hillview, it's expected to run until 11:30. It's a posted meeting of the board of selectmen, and the public is welcome to attend. We have done some outreach, both to the business community as well as some involved staff to ensure that there's attendance, and I know that most of the board members are able to attend. So appreciate your attendance there. And then again, a friendly reminder that there will be a meeting of the selectmen on Tuesday evening, November 18th, here at the town hall. That's a 6 o'clock executive session meeting with a 7 o'clock joint meeting with the Community Planning Commission for the joint appointment for the vacancy, the interviews for which were conducted last Tuesday evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, I'm sorry, is it 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock executive session on November 18th, and then at 7 o'clock, a joint meeting with the CPC for the appointment. And following that, the next regular meeting will be Monday, November 24th.
Which will be a tax.
Classification hearing, that's correct. And that'll be advertised in a transcript next Thursday.
Just, I apologize, is it 6 o'clock?
I'm sorry, yes, November 18th at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
For executive session, and then 7 o'clock, public session with the CPC for a joint appointment.
Okay, I had that all, I had it reversed.
And then November 24th is a Monday, one week from this coming Monday, regular board meeting, which will include the tax classification hearing. No, sir.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to the meeting tomorrow, I apologize, I will not be able to attend. I've got a private business commitment meeting at 9:00 a.m. in Quincy, and I can't be two places at once, I guess, so. So take copious notes, would you?
Yes.
All right, so I won't be able to make it. Just, I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of two residents this past week or so. One, Mary Stanieczynski, again, was a fixture at town elections, a member of the historical Antiquarian Society, president of Golden Age Club, and just, she and her husband Frank very active in the community over the years, and acknowledge her passing at 92 years of age. But terrific family, and Fran and Wayne, their children just offer our condolences, and they've been great contributing members to the community. The other person I'd like to mention is Morris Donigan, and probably most of the members don't, don't know or remember Morris, but Morris spent a lot of time and years contributing to the community in various capacities, when, you know, along with his kids and different sports activities and those sorts of things. But more importantly, when I was a young guy and first elected to this town moderator about 40 years ago, I was looking to get some, a little more stability onto the finance committee and people with a gentler way. And he was the first guy I went to, to ask to step into a very difficult situation, and he willingly and smilingly, as usual, stepped forward and volunteered services and served the community very well in his capacity as a member of the finance committee. And he served on other building committees, he helped build the bandstand down on the common. But a good, quiet, contributing member of the community, and to his wife Honey and his children, again, offer my condolences and heartfelt thanks for contributions he's made to North Reading, as well as just being a personal friend over the years and helping bail me out as a public official at times, so a terrific fellow. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, nothing else.
Mr. Yule?
Yes. First, I want to compliment the North Reading transcript and some informational articles that they put in there regarding military scams and fake charities, and of course, the article by the police chief regarding the IRS. I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but I've been called by, I've gotten that call from the IRS myself, and it's, it can be intimidating, because the word IRS is a scary acronym. But the transcript did a very fine job in letting the public know to be aware of these My only suggestion is never do anything over the phone with somebody you don't know. It's really that, that simple. Also, I want to compliment the recycling committee, in the third of our year, if I understood it correctly, they've already saved $33,000. It's all volunteer stuff. I mean, these, you know, the TA just, about three weeks ago, maybe a month ago at most, you put out a notice saying that we need volunteers for certain committees and so on. And this is the impact that a well-functioning committee can have on the town. And what that really translates to, it saves the town money. Now, in the big picture, $33,000 may not sound like a lot, but it can do some little things for us. to, for a disaster planning survey, to be, to help the town be prepared for a disaster. They're asking for input from the community. Again, this is, you know, a little important thing that input from the community can be very helpful. And they give a website, www.surveymonkey.com/r/nreading. If you go there and you provide your opinions, in case, on flooding, the experiences you might have had, ice storms, hurricanes, and so on, what you think, any suggestions that you may have. And finally, there's the 2014 Good Neighbor Award nomination, which is now open. A lot of people do a lot of good things in our community, and I think it's beneficial for, to recognize, to see if we can recognize someone that did something. That doesn't mean all the other people that were recognized aren't doing something. Well, everybody's doing good things, but it's, it's nice to see that we observe all the good things that are done in the community and recognize it, so. Thank you. Now, with regard to tomorrow morning, I expect to be there, but I do have a 6:00 a.m. doctor's appointment, so I have to see how that goes.
What doctor you all gets, takes appointments at 6:00 a.m.?
I got to get there, too.
Mr. Fody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to start off with, you know, Tuesday being Veterans Day. I want to thank all the veterans and active members of the military and their families for, for their service. Tuesday was North Reading's Veterans Day ceremony. I got to give compliments to Sue Magna for another wonderful year. She did a great job. Bob and, Bob, Mr. Chairman, and Michael Gilberto gave great speeches, and once again, thoroughly impressed by retired Staff Sergeant Rivera, who did a great job. Boy, you know, if you ever consider going into politics, he is a wonderful speaker, for off the cuff. He didn't prepare anything, and he just did a phenomenal job, phenomenal. So, again, great job, once again. I want to repeat something that Mr. Delaney said earlier, he got in the elections. I was going to bring it up. I got there 15 minutes before the polls opened, and there had to be 75 people in line, and the organization that, that the clerk's office put together was just, was impressive. Everybody was, knew exactly where they were supposed to be. If they didn't know it, someone helped them get into the correct line, and there was no commotion whatsoever. And, you know, again, I was going to bring it up, Mr. Delaney did a better job than I did in explaining everything, but I'll tell you, I stood there in line and watched, and everybody knew where they were supposed to be. Everybody who worked there was prepared and ready to go, and those 75 people were in and out in record time. So, again, congratulations to her and her staff. Congratulations to everybody who participated in fall sports at the high school this year. They had a wonderful season all around, but two teams are still in the, up for the state finals. The girls and boys soccer teams are both in the state finals this weekend. The girls are playing Saturday, and the boys are playing Sunday, both at Manning Field in Lynn. So I wish the both teams the best of luck. They did, they did a great job, and from what I understand, the semifinals were both phenomenal matches and something to see. Last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is I just want to remind everybody that the food pantry, don't forget the food pantry during the upcoming holiday seasons. You know, your neighbors are out there, some of them are in need this year, so it'd be great if we could just remember them during the holiday seasons. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Last night, I attended the Relations and Boosters and Support Organizations at the high school, or the new old middle school. New middle school, old high school. I think it's something that we have to, as a board, look at what they've done and really build off of it. We all know what's happened with the North Reading Boosters Club happening in town, and I think we need to have a policy in place, very similar to what the school put in place. If you, if you haven't seen it, you can download it off the school website, or I'm willing to download it and email it to you, or maybe Mr. Gilberto can pull it down and put it into Dropbox for us. But I think we should have a policy. We don't want to let what happened, we should just learn from mistakes that have happened from around town. You know, we have things like the Gardening Club, and we have Parks and Recs that have a lot of organizations that filter money. And I know Parks and Recs, they've done a great job. They make sure people have the 501(c) statute nation, but we as a town should make sure we have a policy as well. So I'd like to propose that to the board, that maybe the chairman to chairman, you can reach out to Mr. Venezia. I got the policy right here. They've done an excellent job, I have to say. I was very impressed last night with what they accomplished. And so that's my suggestion.
Okay. Have you sent, Michael, I sent you an email a while back about direct deposits for our veterans that receive benefits every week. A lot of them do come in, they drag themselves in here to get their check every week, and with the winter weather coming and all, there's a way we can direct deposit their money. I know you were going to look into it, but I just wanted the board to know that I've asked that this at least be looked at. Because they have, a few of them have reached out to me and asked if direct deposit was an option, especially if one of us doesn't get around to sign the payroll on time. I don't want to see someone go without their check, because if we don't sign the payroll, the direct deposits still go into people's accounts. So I really hope that's something, that's a possibility. I'm not sure if you have any update on that.
I'd be happy to report back to the board at the next meeting with an update on the status of that.
We talked about J.T. Barry, Mr. Fody brought up, and I'm really happy for our girls and boys soccer team, as well as the North Reading High School cheerleaders, I believe, who are in first place as well, so congratulations to them. And I just want to wrap it up, because, you know, last meeting, I walked out of here pretty upset. I don't want to get into what happened last meeting. I just want to really thank the people in the community. I've had a tremendous amount of people reach out to me, and it is kind of unfortunate what happened last meeting, and I think we got to move past it as a board. You know, I've made a tremendous amount of mistakes in my time on this board. I'd be the first to admit it. But I, I do hope people understand that my, I try to work in the effort that my words don't speak louder than my actions. I hope my actions do precede my words, and I would hope that some of the other board members would get on, focused on that. We have a lot to do in this town, and if we continue to stay fractured like we are, we're not going to do a great job by taking advantage of what's going on at the J.T. Barry, or taking advantage of the opportunities that are in front of us to help our seniors, and all those objectives that we put up on that board. If we have a fraction, we're not going to be successful. So whatever our differences are, you know, I'm willing to put them aside, but I'm not going to stand here anymore and take attacks. You know, we, you know, in some ways, in them days, I deserve them, in some ways I don't. In the last meeting, I didn't deserve it, and Mr. Yule, you and I need to have a one-on-one outside of this room and air out whatever the thick thing, sheet of papers that you had with issues about me. But if any other board member has, has lost the confidence in me being the vice chair, well, then give me a call and explain why. But I think my actions precede whatever it is, supersede anything else that you may be hearing or thinking. And that's all I want to say about that.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to follow up on, on that communication. You know, I personally was very unhappy with what happened a couple of weeks ago. I felt responsible for letting it escalate. I've talked to both bodies, and I think we're at a point now where we can go forward and focus on our objectives. I think we had a great meeting when we went through our strategic plan, and, you know, what I do know is that, and I think it is appropriate, that when we debate an issue, right, we can disagree.
Absolutely.
I mean, that, that's part of our job, is to look at all sides. And then when we vote, and whether it's unanimous, or four to one, or three to two, it's the board decision, and we should move forward. And that's all I'm going to ask, is, Chair, we've rearranged this. This is an experiment. There's been some complaints that when I'm sitting in the middle and the tables are straight, and I'm focused on a particular discussion here, and someone's trying to get attention, it's difficult. This is probably a good compromise, seeing that we, we're living with the existing furniture. We're being frugal. We managed to get, at least temporarily, the automatic heat working, the air conditioning works, and maybe we can live another year in the facility that we're at. Just a couple of other things. Michael mentioned EdStat, and I guess the majority of us are going to be at least able to attend most or all of the meeting tomorrow, and it's at the Hillview.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I wanted to make some comments about Veterans Day. I think Joe, you know, hit a home run on it, but I can't, of all the Veterans Days I've attended, this past one, from a weather point of view, and the crowd was just phenomenal, you know? I just, normally I'm freezing like this, and I'm trying to hang on to a piece of paper.
One year I can't make it. It's a nice day of the year.
It was just fantastic, and it was, it was a great day, and a great day for the veterans, and, you know, hopefully in the future, we'll experience similar weather. But I may be playing Russian roulette.
Just as an observation, Mr. Chairman, I was hearing feedback in relation to your speech and the tenor of your speech and the topic, and how topical it was, and people just thought it was timely and appropriate. So.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Library. There's a reception for the new librarian on Saturday at 2:00 p.m., if you didn't know.
Yep.
I think everyone got an invitation.
And they have a new Facebook page? Is that?
Yes. And it appears that, based on what I'm seeing, is that they're running a bunch of programs to raise some funds, I gather, based on, I don't know all the detail.
This is one program I'm aware of, yeah.
Right. But there seems to be some, you know, new energy, not that I'm criticizing what Helena got done, but you get new, new blood, new ideas, and I'm sure that's going to be good for the community. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We'll hear a second.
Second.
By Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
This is our policy?
Oh, you know, I, I'm sorry, I did, I forgot to mention one thing, and that's the Senior Thanksgiving Dinner. It's Sunday before Thanksgiving, which would be the 23rd.
23rd.
I got that right? And I believe all the board members got an invitation. At least that's what's been done in the past.
I will not be there. Patriots game, sorry. My son's coming home from college, and I'm taking him to the Patriots game. Lions.